Buen día a todos. Hoy es el 15 de agosto de agosto de 2017, las 11:00. Estos son los miembros habitantes del comité de fronteras de la ciudad de Taus. Aquí se llama en cada orden o se llama el presidente.
Presidente.
Presentado.
Comisionero.
Aquí.
Comisionero.
Presentado.
Comisionero.
Presentado.
Si todos nos sentamos y debatimos. ¿Tiene que leer el texto?
Les doy las gracias a los Estados Unidos de América. Y a la República por la que extiende una nación, un trabajo individual con libertad y justicia para todos.
Y si todos nos gustaría leer, me pido que el señor Joe Klein venga y compre algunas palabras con nosotros al principio de la reunión.
Gracias. Me agradece ser invitada a estar aquí. Antes de empezar esta invitación de hoy, quiero tomar un momento y mirar a quién está aquí y pensar en nuestra comunidad. A veces olvidamos que somos parte de la misma comunidad. Así que somos hechos de diferentes etnias. Somos miembros públicos, varios de ellos están aquí. Empleados, empleados, grandes y pequeños negocios, educadores y familias. Y venimos de diferentes lugares de la fe. Yo soy la ministra de interfaith. Vemos de diferentes lugares de la fe. Tenemos una variedad de lugares de adoración en nuestra ciudad. Tenemos iglesias, templos, tenemos un mosque, tenemos un ashram, tenemos varios santos. En Lubinias, los caminos de haití, donde cazamos o simplemente vamos a las montañas. Todos somos parte de eso. Y siempre me gusta empezar desde el lugar de la gratitud. Si todos pueden tomar un momento y mirar y decir gracias a alguien por venir aquí hoy. Porque esto no es fácil para hacer como miembro de la comunidad o como un miembro público. Así que realmente gracias por todo el servicio. Ahora, pongamos un momento de silencio. Creo que es un lugar de centros para ti que te recuerda quién eres, de dónde vienes y por qué estás aquí hoy. Madre, padre, Dios, todo lo demás. Gran misterio de quien conocemos con nombres tan pequeños. Vamos juntos hoy con gratitud por esta comunidad de personas que trabajan tan duro para llenar nuestra comunidad con éxito. Damos gracias a nuestros funcionarios electos. Damos gracias por su servicio. Damos gracias a nuestros empleados del gobierno y a los miembros de la comunidad que participan viviendo aquí y que vienen a compartir sus esperanzas y sueños por lo que Taus es y puede ser. Hoy escucharán en comentarios públicos, bueno, en la reunión, hablarán de las necesidades y proyectos de la comunidad. Escucharán un poco de los esfuerzos continuos hacia la reducción del suicidio en nuestro hogar. Abrazamos los corazones de aquellos que han sufrido este tipo de pérdida. Abrazamos los corazones de sus familias y sus hijos. Abrazamos los corazones de todos aquellos que trabajan hacia las soluciones y el tratamiento. Nosotros pedimos ayuda y guía mientras seguimos avanzando en soluciones para esta crisis en nuestra comunidad. Lejana de la sanación que estamos teniendo en nuestro país mientras el racismo continúa recaudando su ugly head. Lejana de nuestras líderes locales y nacionales. Lejana de tu sabiduría para guiarnos en nuestras acciones y decisiones. Lejana de la compasión en nuestros corazones mientras trabajamos entre nosotros para el éxito. En nombre de todos nuestros grandes maestros, maestros y profetas, llamo la bendición de Dios a todos aquí hoy. Te damos la gracia por el amor que dan a cada uno de nosotros en nuestra vida y en Taus. Nosotros pedimos fuerza, apoyo y guía para mantenernos avanzando juntos. Para el más alto y mejor de todos los afectados, gracias a humanidad por todo lo que has dado en tu nombre. No se, shalom y amén.
Gracias a todos. Comisioneros, siguiente item, ¿se ha aprobado la agenda?
Voy a ir a la dirección del presidente para aprobar la agenda.
Tengo una motion en un segundo para aprobar la agenda. Se llama el presidente.
Comisionero.
Sí.
Comisionero.
Sí.
Comisionero.
Sí.
Presidente.
Sí. Bien, el siguiente item es el quinto, problemas de ciudadanos. Alguien que quiera abordar la comisión sobre temas que están en la agenda para más tarde y que no pueden estar aquí o algo así. No podemos tomar acción en esto, pero el personal puede ser dirigido a seguirle si es necesario. ¿Alguien que quiera abordar la comisión?
¿Puede decirte algo en comentarios?
Absolutamente. Y su tiempo es limitado.
Quería decirle a la comisión, el señor Joe Klein, además de ser la ministra de interfaith en Taus y activa con el grupo de ayuda a la red Taus. Estamos llevando el carnicero por la vida en Carson Park este fin de semana. Y estamos dando conciencia de la reducción del riesgo de suicidio y conciencia de la comunidad para detener el suicidio en nuestra ciudad. Esta vez pasada, tuvimos 11 o 12 suicidios con muchos significativos. Había mucha juventud que entró en eso en nuestra ciudad. Este año creo que estamos en tres en toda la ciudad. Así que la conciencia continua que se produce de la comunidad es realmente ayudante. Así que el carnicero por la vida es un evento de todo el día. Iniciamos a las 20, pasamos por las 6, estamos teniendo bandas, estamos teniendo juegos de carnicero, estamos teniendo un booth de basura. Y hemos comprometido en los booths de basura ahora Jeff Carr, Osi Hyatt, Darian Fernandez, que está llamando al señor Blankenborn a participar si quiere. El jefe va a venir, pero todavía estamos trabajando en su programa. La comisionera O'Donnell ha dicho que ella va a venir. Así que estoy preguntando si hay alguien más que quisiera salir y traer conciencia de los esfuerzos de reducción del riesgo de suicidio en nuestra comunidad. Apoyar a los niños, apoyar a los non-profits de la comunidad que están participando. Tenemos, no me equivoco, estos flyer, que alguien puede poner ahí. Tenemos un gran apoyo. Somos un proyecto de la Fundación de la Comunidad de Taus. Recibimos un grant de United Way para trabajar. Tenemos unos 15 diferentes non-profits que incluyen Brother, Sister, Community Against Violence, Cry County, Nonviolence World, working out Youth Court. También estarán en booths. Teníamos otras actividades, hay un Race de patatas, creo que tal vez incluso uno para adultos, Rapids, I guess, and Proxess Time. Así que, ciudadanos, en Carson Park. Te daré estos aquí. Y nuestros plazos de basura están en este momento todavía abiertos. Creo que desde las 2:30 hasta las 4:30 en 15 o incrementos de 30 minutos. ¿Cuál es la tarjeta de basura? Bien.
Gracias.
El número, en realidad, si quieres firmarlo para alguien que lo hace, para alguien de la comunidad. Mi número es 770-1327. Y puedes llamarme directamente y te lo firmo o te diré más información. Y el sitio web es healthoutreachtaus.com.
Señor presidente.
Vaya a ir antes o después del presidente.
Podemos ponerte en 2:15 minutos cada uno.
Por 45, podrías hacer mucho dinero.
Bueno, en realidad, debería decirte que cuando llamé a la ciudad confirmé el plazo de la jefa. Kathy dijo, tengo que estar por ahí para derramar mi pérdida de agua, ¿verdad? Así que esperamos generar mucha conciencia y diversión.
Gracias por lo que haces.
Gracias.
Señor Usano.
Gracias. No voy a tomar demasiado de tu tiempo. Solo quiero agradecerle por, miré su agenda aquí. Y quiero agradecerle por mantener su formación ciudadana o gente hablando contigo a 5 minutos. A diferencia de la ciudad que ha elegido reducir esa cantidad de 5 minutos a 3 minutos debido a, supongo, no querer escuchar de la gente. Pero quiero agradecerte por mantenerlo a 5 minutos, eso es una cosa. La otra cosa que quiero hablar contigo es que el 5 de julio apareció un pequeño chihuahua en mi casa. Y he estado alimentándolo desde entonces. Pero este pequeño perro ha sido tan abusado que no quiere nada que sea femenino. No quiere nada que ver con ningún humano, todo lo que quiere es ser sano. He hecho eso y he llegado al punto en que incluso la seguo hasta donde está. Y actualmente está en mi casa.
En tu casa.
Ella y mi hijo se unieron un poco. Bien, bueno, quería en el registro que si puedes captarla, quiero adoptar a este pequeño perro. Y quiero hacer lo que pueda para captar a este pequeño perro, pero no quiero que este perro, como está ahora mismo, no es adaptable a ninguna dependencia porque ha sido tan abusado. Así que si lo captas, quiero asegurarte que el condado, la ciudad, los corazones rectos. Y quiero que la cámara dice que quiero este perro y que mejor no se ponga en cualquier razón.
¿Viste ese bol que tenemos? Ella no ha venido a comer. Por alguna razón, ha venido a mi hijo, así que si lo captas, te llevaré a tu casa.
¿Te llevará a mi casa?
Necesitamos nombrarla Alicia.
Bueno, mi nombre para ella es Boo. Porque me parece que es Boo.
Realmente agradezco lo que has estado haciendo con ese perro. Lo hemos visto ahora y duerme en mi patio de frente en la planta.
Sí, ella lo hará hasta que se sienta amenazado. Y yo la recogí después de alrededor del quinto o sexto día, no pensando en ella. Me golpeó. Terminé en el hospital. Y si estaba llevando a mi madre al hospital o no, los médicos de la sala de emergencia en ese hospital son muy buenos. Y me arreglaron con 10 disparos. Mi mano estaba sangrando como un globo. Este pequeño perro es peligroso, pero ningún perro merece este tipo de tratamiento a lo que se le siente como si fuera lo que quiere hacer.
Así que voy a hacerlo si mi hijo puede conseguirlo porque por alguna razón ella...
No lo recogió, no lo recogió, ella lo aguanta.
Así que gracias, me agradezco lo que has estado haciendo por ella. ¿Alguien más que quiera abordar la comisión a esta hora? Hola.
Estaba siguiendo al señor Usano. He estado alimentando, vivo en la zona de Taus, ¿no es cierto? He estado alimentando a este pequeño perro de heino mixto. Él apareció en mi casa un día, muchas personas tiraron sus perros de la comunidad, cerca de allí. Y él apareció, su cobarde está atrapando vehículos y se esconde bajo mi árbol y luego se desvanece en frente de una bicicleta. No, es muy amable, muy amable. Lo conocí todo el verano, lo guardé en mi parca trasera el verano junto con el perro. Pero no puedo permitirlo, vacinarlo o traerlo a casa. He llamado a varias locaciones. Y he llamado porque es un peligro. Hay muchas bicicletas, motocicletas, colectores, y va a lastimar a alguien. Y he llamado a la ciudad para que venga a recogerlo y no obtuvo absolutamente ninguna respuesta de ellos.
Podemos seguirle.
Me agradezco eso.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
¿Alguien más? No, seguimos adelante. El sexto es la presentación, la primera siendo una presentación sobre el muralista de Taus y Paul Figueroa del Consejo de Artes de Taus. La completación del muralista de detención de Taus County y una invitación a la apertura de una galería artística que mostrará este mural. ¿Paul?
Si te quedas con nosotros por solo un momento, queremos revelarlo.
Bien, a todos. ¿Qué dice en la parte inferior?
En la parte inferior está el peaje, el peaje existente. Es la producción y asociación de la industria de la piel. No escuché gas de la comisión.
Cuando no te siguió, lo pensé, era muy cool.
Antes de comenzar mi presentación formal, me gustaría presentarte al artista que donó su tiempo, materiales y se unió con los detenidos del centro adulto para crear este mural. Se llama Scripture. Quizás hayas visto algunos de sus trabajos en la ciudad. Estoy orgulloso también de compartir contigo que fue un artista de la visión artística de Taus en el festival de artes de verano de 2015. Y me gustaría que venga por un momento y compartiera con usted su experiencia y reconociera a algunas de las personas en la audiencia que ayudaron a que esta muy importante actividad artística ocurriera en el centro de detención adulto. Scripture.
Buen día.
Buen día.
Gracias por invitarme. Scripture es mi nombre, artista de Taus tercera generación. Los abuelos vinieron aquí a través de un don de arte. Así que me mudaron a aquí para enriquecer la comunidad artística y estoy siguiendo esa tradición. Y he sido honrado poder hacer este mural aquí con los detenidos de Taus County. Mi razón personal detrás de hacerlo es que cuando era menor, me metí en mucha problemas. Y tuve a alguien que viniera a la detención juvenil y hablara con nosotros sobre el arte. Y recuerdo que tuvo un impacto en mí. Si puedes cambiar la perspectiva de alguien, estás haciendo un buen trabajo. Así que la oportunidad surgió y eso es lo que terminé haciendo. Y me gustaría reconocer a Mario Senior, uno de los padres de uno de los detenidos involucrados en el proyecto. El resto no podía estar aquí hoy, pero eran muy pasivos con el proyecto. Y también me gustaría reconocer al guardia Nelson por permitir este proyecto y trabajar conmigo y darnos las libertades que teníamos para poder producir esta pieza. Y es una pieza intensa, si la miras, hay mucho allí. Y la idea es de mí y cuatro detenidos. Todos nos sentamos y llegamos con el concepto juntos. Y luego hicimos escuchas aparte de uno del otro y luego lo combinamos en una pieza coherente. La historia contada allí es la dualidad de la vida y la muerte y las dificultades y la alma eterna que no puede ser atrapada o encarcelada o perdida por la eternidad. Y esa es la representación de ello, es la esperanza de mejores días. Y cuando estás lidiando con la encarcelación, hay una cierta cantidad de tiempo otorgado a estos señores donde son capaces de producir arte y tomar el tiempo para mejorar sus habilidades y sus habilidades. Y la capacidad de ellos para poder trabajar en algo que creían que iba a ser visto en el exterior, creo que tuvo un gran impacto y les dio algún sentido a la obra, que alguien había visto sus talentos a menos de lo que habían sido encarcelados pero estaban más interesados en lo que podían hacer con una nota positiva. Fue una operación muy suave. Todos los hombres estaban muy interesados en el proyecto y realmente estaban totalmente listos. No teníamos problemas todo el tiempo, todos estaban completamente comportados y relajados. Realmente muestra el arte. Así que tenemos un show que viene el 25 en la Galería de Orley. Y tengo algunos flyers aquí que me gustaría dar. Y si quieres asistir, sería maravilloso. Y también van a haber artes de los detenidos sobre ponchos. Y ponchos, si nadie es familiar con la palabra, es un durack que ellos dibujaron. Se saca de un commissary, una bandana blanca vacía. Y eso es predominantemente lo que dibujaron. Así que ese es el título de la pieza, es la producción de ponchos. Y el show de la galería va a contener más de 30, 40 ponchos originales de los detenidos encarcelados ahora. Algunos fuera, algunos en, algunos con sentencias en la cárcel. Así que habrá un mix interesante de arte desde el interior, junto con esta pieza original aquí. Así que gracias por tu tiempo y volveré a Paul.
Señor presidente.
Uh, Chris O'Donnell.
¿Podría explicar cómo lo hiciste? ¿Es de algodón o...?
Sí, bueno, esto es todo algo que he construido. He montado los canvas y los tares son solo los platos de pintor que usé en un trabajo. Así que simplemente monté un frame crudo detrás y pegué el material a él. Y expliqué ese proceso a los hombres allí porque si vas y intentas comprar un canvas de ese tamaño, vas a estar pagando más de $400 o así. Así que esos fueron construidos de cero, muy fáciles de hacer. Los tares de pintor, lo mismo que cubrimos cuando lo revelamos. Así que es un método bastante fácil de ponerlos juntos y eso nos permitió hacer algo de tamaño sustancial en el interior y sacarlo en porciones para que pudieramos mostrarlo en el exterior. Y voy a decir que parece bien.
Paul.
Gracias, Scripture. Y gracias a los comisioneros por permitirnos hacer esta presentación hoy. El Consejo de Artes de Taus es una organización nonprofit de 501 C. Somos un board voluntario y trabajamos para promover la conciencia, la comprensión y el aprecio de todos los artes creativos y para defender a los artistas y las organizaciones artísticas de Taus County. Nuevo México define aún más una comisión de artes locales como una entidad que ofrece actividades como la educación artística y una variedad de venues. Este es un ejemplo único de un venue y una actividad de educación artística. El Consejo de Artes de Taus se aplica y recibe financiación a través de un contrato de servicios de la New Mexico Arts, una división del Departamento de Asuntos Culturales y por el National Endowment for the Arts. Aplaudimos y apoyamos la instrucción artística de la detención adulta de Taus County que produjo el mural revelado hoy. Para 27, 18 y 18 en nuestro programa de programas y servicios son nuevas asociaciones y servicios de difusión con un foco en centros de detención adulta y juvenil con servicios de educación artística. Debaremos de financiar y dejar de recibir ingresos para este propósito. Scripture mencionó el show que viene a la Galería de Orley. Un porcentaje de ventas volverá a los artistas con este mural y también a la continuación del programa. El Consejo de Artes de Taus pagó por todas estas imprentas y serán defensores de su compra. Estare disponible mañana si alguno de ustedes quiere adquirir una imprenta. Y nos encanta que Taus County se uniera a nosotros en la asociación para continuar este programa. Y os rechazamos para combinar nuestras expenditures para la continuación de la actividad artística del Centro de Detención Adulta de Taus County. Ese es el Consejo de Artes. Vamos a poner el otro gorro. El Comité de Revisión de Artes y Artes de Taus fue establecido por la resolución número 2011-54 con la resolución 2014-13 para su composición. Soy honrado por ser designado y servir en este comité desde mayo de 2014. El comité revisa y recomienda en todas las donaciones, exhibiciones o submisiones al condado para cualquier arte o objeto histórico o colección de objetos que se instalen, exhibir o mostrar en propiedades del condado o cualquier evento relacionado que se realice, sin importar la duración de la exhibición. Esa es la política de la resolución. Este comité fue instrumental en el proceso de selección de arte público en el complejo del condado. Una escultura de piedra de John Suazo, donada por el condado. También defensor y asistió al estates de Ted Agry para la donación de "Flote de viento", recientemente instalado y dedicado en frente del complejo. A través de los esfuerzos del comité, se aseguró financiación de una fundación privada para la imprenta y el tráfico de fotografías históricas de Taus County que se exhibían en edificios del condado para el disfrute y para la mayor orgullosidad del público. Ahora, como miembro activo del comité, desearía recomendar que el condado Taus pida a su Comité de Revisión de Artes y Artes que se reunan y formalmente recomienda a la comisión la adquisición de este mural para la colección de arte público del condado. Gracias.
¿Tiene una fecha propuesta para reunirse?
Mañana. No, señor, no lo haré. Nos reuniremos en la conveniencia logística de no solo los voluntarios de la comunidad, sino también del personal de Taus County y el comisionero que está en la exoficiaal, creo que está en esa posición del comité.
Sí, actualmente estoy allí, pero Chris O'Donnell fue la que me recomendó y no la de la de allá. Estoy un poco confuso, pero eso sucede mucho. ¿Podrías ir con Richard Sanchez, quien es nuestro personal último en eso y la fecha de la reunión que tenemos?
Me encantaría hacerlo.
Gracias.
¿Algunos otros preguntas?
¿Podríamos tener una copia de la invitación?
Absolutamente. Y un último item que el Consejo de Artes había...
¿Dónde está la galería?
Está justo al lado del historial de la casa de la comercio. Si miras el Donado de Luis, Bed y Breakfast, en Carson Road.
Bien.
Atrás de la casa del famoso líder, el camino. Eso es una semana de este viernes a 7:00 p.m. Sé que es tarde para muchos de nosotros, pero es cuando la multitud joven empieza en un fin de semana. Y en conclusión, hubo una discusión sobre proporcionar una oportunidad para aquellos involucrados con este mural para mostrar más su trabajo y tenerlo disponible para la compra. De hecho, esta es una oportunidad aquí, una vez que capturaste su interés en el arte y les dio la oportunidad de expresar su creatividad. Como todos nosotros, querrían ver el potencial de ingresos de su arte o de su trabajo. Así que actualmente hay un número de salas vacías en la plaza de 121 Norte, conocida como el Courthouse de la Comunidad História. Y quiero ponerlo ahí para ustedes hoy para pensar en permitir que este programa con el Consejo de Artes de Taus se popule solo durante el festival de artes de verano del 23 de septiembre hasta el 1 de octubre en una, dos o algunos de las salas vacías en ese piso, para que cuando las multitudes de residentes y visitantes de Taus pasen por la plaza no vean una ventana vacía, sino una verdaderamente única forma de arte hecha por artistas increíbles. Gracias.
Señor presidente. Comisionero.
Gracias, gracias a ambos por estar aquí. Es un mural hermoso, realmente lo agradezco. Posiblemente puedas ponerlo en forma de solicitud al comité de la ciudad.
¿Puedo?
Puedo.
Me gustaría que aceptaras.
Gracias, buena idea.
Es una gran invitación.
Bien, muy buena idea, gracias, Paul.
Queremos disculparnos, pero a esta hora necesitamos eliminar ese mural. Así que habrá un poco de disturbios a medida que la próxima presentación...
Los pollitos odiosos de los pollitos. Gracias.
Gracias.
Bien, la siguiente es la presentación de Strong in Heart Project y su equipo. Será dirigida por Joe Pollard, pero hay otras personas que ayudarán a la presentación, incluyendo a Eric Burrow.
Gracias, Jerry, gracias a los comisioneros, una gran oportunidad de nuevo de abrirlos a ustedes y, ya sabes, simplemente traer a la luz algunas de las oportunidades que tuvimos en asistir a un workshop de construcciones de la comunidad en Colorado. Esto es algo que comenzamos hace un poco más de un año. Le di la fondación, patrocinan un número de entidades para votar en lo que llaman construcciones de la comunidad. Estas son comunidades en todo el país que básicamente son comunidades como las nuestras que tienen algunos de los mismos problemas. Tenemos un número de personas en nuestra comunidad que, supongo, la mayoría de las personas no les gusta venir a nuestras reuniones. Pero, ¿cómo podemos llegar a esas personas? Tenemos una minoría que viene a las reuniones y es muy vocal, pero tenemos a mucha gente que no viene a las reuniones y están muy despiertos. Y la mayoría de ellos no quiere venir a las reuniones. Esta es una oportunidad para llegar a esas personas, para ver lo que queremos hacer. Sabes, estamos trayéndolo a nuestra comunidad, lo llamamos Strong in Heart. Y sé que algunos de ustedes han oído hablar de ello, creo. Y tengo una carta... And I know of you, a number of you have heard of it, I believe, and I have a letter that we've composed, and it reads, "Thank you for the opportunity to discuss this Strong at Heart project, which aims to bring our community together to identify a shared vision for the downtown Taos and a strategy for making that vision a reality. We believe that Taos County could play an important leadership role in this project and its implementation. As such, in addition to updating you on the project, our hope is to engage the county as a formal partner in Strong at Heart. Originally convened by the Towne House, the ultimate success of Strong at Heart rests on creating broad-based ownership by leadership of the project and its outcomes. It requires improving how we engage the community, as well as how the various public, private, and nonprofit organizations and institutions work together to get things done. It is in this spirit that we hope to engage the county in this project. Specifically, we request the county's participation in the project leadership and implementation team, known as LIT. The LIT was created to engage key local organizations and institutions, such as the county, in the leadership and execution of the project, as well as the implementation of its outcomes. The LIT will meet monthly for about an hour to two hours. More information on the roles and composition of the LIT and other project committees is attached, and there's, I believe, there was a presentation that was given to you, and Jim Pollard will take this, and you have a PowerPoint presentation, so, Jim?"
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Jim Pollard, and I'm chairman of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm a member of Strong at Heart since the mayor invited me last year. Strong at Heart is a community-driven process to build a thriving downtown for everyone. Our goal is to have a constructive dialogue that identifies our shared vision for the future and develop an action plan to achieve that vision. The project was initiated by the town following the town's participation in the workshop the mayor discussed. That workshop was focused on economic development and community engagement for places just like us, small, changing, mountain communities that benefit from, but are typically penalized by having a state highway run right through the center of town. The town was selected to participate in that conference workshop hosted by a non-for-profit called Community Builders located out of Ludwood Springs, Colorado. And we were inspired. We applied and were, we applied to them, and we're awarding technical assistance from Community Builders. This technical assistance now is at no cost to the town, but the Strong at Heart organization is providing the funding for all of the expenses. Why Strong at Heart? Why downtown? Downtown Taos is the heart of our community, as the civic and economic center of town reflects our history and our heritage, as well as our future. It's where we all come together. That's what this project's about, coming together as a community to create that shared vision and a strategy. Downtown, just like the rest of Taos County, has changed over the years. Looking ahead, those changes are going to continue with or without community input. We see it at all our meetings. We need to decide how to respond. We need to get ahead of these changes so that we can change according to the community wishes. We need to quit arguing with the public about the changes brought before our commissions and councils. All communities experience change. How do we manage it? Through leadership, basically, at the simplest level, as you all know, leadership is about managing change. The challenges we face are real. Our community's changing demographically and economically and physically. Not everybody's thriving. Our poverty rate's at around twenty-one percent, and our young people are leaving at an alarming rate, largely due to a lack of opportunities. Our median income levels are lower than state and national levels, and the cost of housing is increasingly out of reach. There's a growing gap between incomes and housing costs. We know that Taosanias want to have a say in how their community develops. However, as you know, our community has struggled to work together and reach agreement about what we want for the future. With this project, we have an opportunity to do things differently than in the past. Strong at Heart wants to create a space for constructive dialogue to create a shared vision for how we manage that group in a way that will protect our historic character, help our businesses and people thrive, and contribute to our quality of life. We think now's the right opportunity, the right time for this community conversation. There are growing development pressures right now. We're seeing a lot of application, not a lot, but enough applications to be concerning to convert agricultural land into residential subdivisions. New Mexico DOT is planning a major overhaul of the Vasado Del Pico in the next couple of years. It actually started yesterday, according to NMDOT. And we have a chance, a very limited chance, to have a direct say in how that effort and our development can work together as we get closer to the north end of the town. We have some parallel projects ongoing like the Asachia Revitalization Project, where community members are talking about downtown development and the need to honor tradition and culture. This is why we're here today. What role can the county play? Strong at Heart is a very diverse set of people right now, from local government, nonprofits, the business community, and neighborhoods behind the project. The project is managed by what we call the PMT, the Project Management Team. It includes several town staff, myself as the planning commissioner, Councilman Nate Evans, the Lor Foundation, and the Community Builders Team. We basically provide the work and provide the resources for the project. It's driven by what we call the CAC, the Citizens Advisory Committee. Right now, it consists of twenty-two members of our community representing a broad cross-section. They act as volunteers and advisors on engaging the community in the process at the moment. Currently, Commissioner O'Donnell sits on the Citizens Advisory Committee as a private citizen. The LIT, the Leadership Implementation Team, is our steering committee, our cosponsors. All of the LIT members sit on our CAC. They sit as representatives of their organizations, including at the moment the Taos Community Foundation, the Taos Land Trust, U N M Taos, Taos County Chamber of Commerce, Taos Alive, the Town of Taos, and the Lor Foundation. And this is the cosponsorship role and membership on that LIT committee that we extend this invitation this morning to the county. Originally Strong at Heart project was officially convened by the Town of Taos, and they were the LIT, the leadership of the project. At the end of June, however, our Citizens Advisory Committee recommended that the LIT be modified to incorporate a broader range of the community's institutional leadership, including, as I mentioned, the Land Trust, the Community Foundation, U N M, and the Chamber of Commerce. The PMT, the Project Management Team, has been directed to seek additional support on the LIT, both from Taos County, Kate Carson Electric, and Holy Cross Hospital. Discussions are underway now. These groups, through their appointed members, provide a PMT and CAC with strategic and collaborative leadership necessary to leverage our Taos partnerships, to leverage our resources. We need them very, very desperately for this long-term success of this project. Specifically, they provide institutional knowledge and resources to advise on the project strategy and our resource needs. They provide input on and assistance with public outreach materials and activities. They identify any legal, fiscal, and/or physical constraints associated with the actions and strategies identified. They work to build support for the project implementation or adopt our project outcomes. They use their networks and leadership to help build broader-based community support for adoption and implementation of these project outcomes. The LIT meets once a month. In addition to becoming an additional spot, an official sponsor of Strong at Heart and appointing a member to the LIT, examples of the type of support that the county might be able to provide would include, as a convener post, supporting outreach engagement with our community networks by offering a cosponsor or lead events, financial or material support, contributing financially or through in-kind contributions to our community meetings, engagement activities, refreshments, printing, having a place for us just to get together, and mainly endorsement, endorsing this process by lending your credibility and commitment to the long-term success of Strong at Heart. This support, this endorsement will be negotiated with each of the cosponsors as we go along, but in general, you might add your logo to the list of cosponsors who commit to support the project publicly. Support our project communications. What can Strong at Heart do? This is really about an interesting public process so far. We've identified, we ask people two basic questions. What do you love about Taos? And secondly, what would you like to see different? What would you like to see for the future for Taos? And it's really created a shared vision for downtown. Let me move on to another one because it's a little more. Right now, we're in phase one. We're completing phase one, our values presentation. What matters to us? Where are we right now? Week after next, we will have five additional public meetings. It's the same meeting, five different times. In our first general meeting, we had three hundred people, and it was really, really difficult, as you can imagine, to try and coordinate all of the efforts. The comments were wonderful, but it was very difficult to manage the meeting. Now we'll have five meetings. You can pick a day and a time, literally, that's more convenient for you. We'll be able to deal with fifty to eighty people at each group, and the conversations that we'll be able to have will be much more meaningful. Phase two is really going to identify where we're going, where we want to be. We're going to take the comments and the values that have been established in phase one and try and turn them into something concrete. Ask people to verify what they say their values are. I was talking to Chairman Fambro just before the meeting, and it's an interesting thing that comes out of a lot of these survey cards with just two questions. What do you love about Taos? What would you like to see different? A really common thread is we love the small-town nature of this community. Community, for people, by the way, Taos is Taos County, it's just not downtown, although that's what our focus is. Everybody comes here to the center of town. We love the small-town nature. But what we would like to see different is we'd like to see more stores or bigger stores or a bigger road. There are conflicts in people's statements as they go through, but they're really valid, valid points. I don't think they need to be in conflict. I think through leadership, we can make this come out properly. Phase three is the action plan. It'll go from October to January, which is to try and develop the first two phases and try and figure out from the community's point of view how we get there. Phase four is after January, and that's to try and develop an action plan for the town and any others. By the way, we're sharing all the data that we're getting with our cosponsors. A lot of the demographics, the information, the wishes for the community are being shared with everybody, which is something that certainly we can share with the county. We're not just going off the survey cards, and it's not just a series of public meetings. There's some extensive outreach program going on right now. We're doing individual interviews with peoples. We had some three hundred Taos citizens selected originally at the beginning, or not suggested and nominated in the beginning, as people who had an outspoken interest in our community. We're doing active storytelling, recording by video and doing audio recordings as well. We have extensive social media campaigns. People are logging on online and doing their own self-submissions. We've been doing pop-ups. You may have seen us at the fiestas, at Taos Plaza Live, we'll be at the county fair on Saturday. We've been popping up in restaurants and coffee shops and ale houses and microbreweries all over town to get input. Anything to do to provide opportunities to share this vision. Strong at Heart's leading this dialogue between June and the end of the year. Again, as I mentioned earlier, what do you love? What will make this a better place? And how do we get there? How can we work with you? This is the real reason we're here doing this project. We all care about the project, about the community. We all love our rich cultural heritage. We all love living in a spectacular location. And our downtown historically has been at the heart of all of it. In closing, we want to ask you for your consideration for this proposal that the county join us in the Strong at Heart efforts. Interestingly, one of the recurring comments, again, that we receive from our citizens in our surveys is that they wish for closer collaboration with town and county government. We know from our efforts so far that Taosanias want to have that say. However, the community has struggled to work together to reach agreement about what they want for the future. For this project, we have the opportunity to do it differently. With Taos County as one of our partners, we can multiply our chances for that success. Please, tell us what we can do to bring you on board. Any questions?
Commissioner O'Donnell, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I think you're asking for someone else besides me to be on the LIT and have an actual commission appointment.
The LIT membership is, the representative on the LIT is really determined by the partner organization. Commissioner O'Donnell, you were asked to join because of your public involvement and the interest that you showed early on with a lot of twenty-one other members, but that in no way limits your selection. If you do join us, we would ask you to appoint a member. We would ask you, most of the organization's head will back up. So, Dr. Hewlett, for example, has two people to back him up in case he can't make a meeting of it. Certainly extends the coverage throughout the organization that way as well.
Mr. Blankhead.
Thank you, Chairman. Thanks, Jim, and Mayor. So, you know, early on, you mentioned one of the big challenges we have, which is housing. It's huge, waiting lists, low-cost housing, the fact that unmeetings are going to Airbnb instead of longer term. It's a, it's a big problem for the community. And you also mentioned collaboration between the town and the county. Housing is one area where we have an opportunity. The county has the land that's within the county's jurisdictions, and the town has the necessary state designation to qualify for tax incentives that make the business proposition possible. There are a couple of contractors interested. There are many things in place, but we need to follow through. I just hope it's something that this group and, of course, others can focus on.
Mr. Blankhead, that's one of the primary things that came up, not only during our initial visit to Durango, where we started to try to define what needed to be done for towns, but it's one of the first three or four things that even the citizens have on their mind. We envision at this moment, as we get into phase three of this, as we start to break into identifying what our priorities are, that we'll have a separate task force so that by January, we can find out exactly what we think we need to do to move this on.
It'll be too late in January because you have to get your application in for the tax subsidy before then. I can't remember what the deadline is. Mayor probably knows. But if we wait till then, we're going to lose another year in our opportunity to get this project going. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Oberle. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think economic development is a big factor. You drive through the plaza, you drive through Taos, and you see a lot of empty storefronts. You know, it's the greedy landlords who insist on charging five thousand dollars a month for a space that's maybe only worth a thousand. If they would truly see the need to be able to fill those stores, they would charge less and would work towards bringing in new business. That's economic development. Each one of those businesses could possibly potentially bring in new employees, hiring new employees. Economic development also is in our hotel industry. Mayor Oberle and I had a discussion yesterday after the veterans' function, and... And there was recently a survey that was taken by New Mexico Association of Counties with regards to the conference that we had here in August or June, sorry. And most of the people that responded to this survey talked about the gross condition of our hotels and motels in Towes County. And speaking personally to a lot of these individuals, many of them even had to go as far away to Santa Fe, even Escondola, to be able to get lodging, hotel, motel during their time here at the county for the New Mexico Conference. So a lot of that contributes to the situation that we have in our community and somehow that needs to be addressed as well.
Commissioner Mayor O'Donnell, the downtown stores is really a prime example of what we can have to for economic development. I've been involved with the planning commission off and on for some, I think you and I first joined the extraterritorial commission some 27 years ago. The problem is much more complex than just what some absentee landlords want to charge for rent. It's affected by the way our traffic works downtown. It's affected by so many other variables in terms, even including the storied use of the plaza, whether or not there, there's no parking for a lot of those stores. Those four stores that are along, right next to Susie Starr's place right now have no parking, even for the employees that are there. We've never had an opportunity with this situation downtown to be able to get enough people to talk together about all of the problems that affect that one particular area so that we can have some sort of, I won't call it quite a consensus, but a feeling for how it can be solved so that we can memorialize that, to put that in a document so that a future planning commission or a town councilor, somebody actually has some support and has some documentation to go forward with it. What happens now is we tend to get into an argument over one minor detail and it goes on and on and we never quite reach the solution. I think this is an opportunity, just as you want more stores and bigger stores, but you want to keep the small town, here's a chance to examine all those factors together, have the community talk directly about it, and then be able to go forward.
So commissioners, you know, we are where we are today because we love who we live. We love the opportunity that we have and we really want to just make it better for everyone. You know, Commissioner Blankhorn, we've been working on that, Portables Housing or, you know, some sort of housing. An RFP did go out and we're still working on that. I believe Leandro and Rick are working on the final details of title history property and stuff like that. So it is moving forward and we hope to see something before January, hoping to see it before December. So we're looking forward to that. I know you guys are working on the property out there already and we're trying to get things worked out. I believe Rick and Leandro are working on it. And so, you know, again, we just ask for your appointment to somebody on this committee. I think it really enhances, you know, us working together, enhances the community that we can figure out a way to really move forward. You know, we see a lot of, you know, we need economic development, we need jobs for our young people, we need opportunities for all of us. So I would ask though, if, if any possibility that we could, the survey that was taken that you might share that with the town in Towes. I know we have a meeting coming up on the 22nd, I believe. If you could share that, we would really love, you know, to see, you know, what some of those comments were because, you know, we, as we move forward, we hear a lot of those issues, but some people don't hear them. And, you know, this was a survey that was done by, the county wasn't done by the town. So, you know, it's, it would be a good opportunity to hear some of those because we do hear, there's a lot of, of these, like the association, a county group that came here, they'd love to come to Towes because they love the ambiance and the things that we have to offer, but there's not enough opportunities for him or places for them to stay right here in the community. And the places, some of the places that we do have are not fit for them. So they decline to come here. So we just want to make a, again, there's opportunities in our community to grow because we love where we live and there's opportunities for us to work together and hopefully we can get an appointment to, to sit on that.
Thank you.
One more word, sorry. I, back in November when we were at the Durango meeting, I can't remember sitting back, the Cubs were playing the World Series at that time, wasn't it?
They won that, didn't they?
Yeah. I remember during the rainbreak, thinking about portable housing, gone, it was a quick win. This is really low-hanging fruit. We're already there. All of the right things seem to be in place at this moment. What's it going to take to try and bring it along? Maybe with, if you consider an appointment at the LIT, maybe you could help make that a focus in one of our first ledger groups and we can try and provide whatever resources are pushing, we're going to need at the end of town to make this happen. Thank you.
Thanks. Is that scheduled for the next meeting or make a phone call for that?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have fun closing.
Yeah, if we did it that way now, I know Commissioner Queiroz and Star over there.
Well, he had a little emergency this morning. He wasn't leaving till the Saturday. Hopefully everything's okay.
We'll probably see him on the road soon. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. All right. ITC is a presentation from True Connect Loan. Our reporter, president and CEO of Prosperity Works will now address the commission. Thank you. Continue.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for having me. Prosperity Works is an organization that works on developing opportunities for low-income people, for their financial inclusion and their financial security. We have a number of products and services that are based on building assets because we believe that income gets you by, that assets get you ahead. In order to do that, however, one of the things that needs to happen is that families need to stabilize before they can grow. In order to stabilize, they have to increase income, decrease cost, or both. So we've had a big stake in the ground in the decreased cost arena because our economy has not supported increased incomes. And in the decreased cost area, and one of the things that we've worked hard on over almost 10 years now is predatory lending, which is stripping our families and our communities from important resources that can be circulated in the community and increase the efforts on economic development. So what you may or may not know is that we have over 700 licenses for predatory lenders in our state. And those are installment lenders and payday lenders and consumer finance lenders and also refund anticipation lenders. The, while it looks like those lenders are mom-and-pop stores, in fact, 80% of those are really organizations that are licensed outside of our state. They're licensed in the state, but they're run by organizations that are outside of our state. So the drain on our economy and on our most vulnerable families is enormous. In our efforts to control this, we run into the buzzsaw of huge lobbying in, in our state legislature where cap rates, interest rates can be set. We have no use rate in our state. And as a result of that, we have seen rates as high as, literally as high as 6,000%. The average in our state is 350%. So in the last session, we were able to get some controls that we're calling, actually calling progress, not victory. So what happened in the last session is that we were able to get 175% cap rate on storefront lending and sweep all of the different parts of the industry under those rules and also under rules of reporting. So again, progress, not victory. We expect that that work will save New Mexicans $500 million over the next two years. That gives you some notion of how big this industry is. So one of the things that we do at Prosperity Works is that we're always looking for yes and answers. So on the one hand, we really are trying to limit what's going on in storefront lending. And the other hand, on the other hand, we're looking for opportunities for New Mexicans to have loans that are safe, secure, and affordable. And these are for New Mexicans who don't have finance scores that allow them to go to our local financial institutions and get a loan that any of us in this room might expect to get. I just got a car loan for 1.99% for instance. So we did a lot of research and invited a group that is called True Connect, based in San Diego, into our state. They have a product which is an employer-based product, no risk, no cost to the employer, and it is automated and it can provide an alternative employee benefit. And that benefit is to be able to access this loan at 24.9%. And at 24.9%, let me just give you an example again. One of my board members is, is somebody that is a national figure from the New Mexico School of Law on predatory lending. And she was quoted when we were doing the work, around 36%. And she's told me, not only one day I came out and my neighbor next door who was really this nice old lady, I said, "Don't say old," said to me, called me the F-word because I was proposing a 36% cap rate. What was the matter with me that I would agree to such a thing? Well, 24.9% sounds outrageous also. However, let me tell you what the difference is between what we have right now and what we would have if we, if your employees had a 24.9% loan. So a $1,000 title loan today would cost $1,000, $3,000 in one year. And there's no guarantee that that loan would be paid off because they're structured as interest-only loans. And so the result of that has been that in 2015, there were almost 3,000 cars repossessed in New Mexico. That same loan with a True Connect loan that you could offer your employees would cost $157 over the year. The True Connect loan is amortized over one year. Your employees would be eligible for an amount not to exceed $3,000, which is actually controlled by their income. So if they are a low-income worker, they can't get a $3,000 loan. They can't exceed 8% of their gross monthly pay for a payment. And this is the way it's underwritten. This is the way we make sure that we're helping, not putting employees in a ditch. So the, the loan was launched for Doñata County employees in February. There have already been 130 loans made to Doñata employees. 18% of their workforce has already used the loan. And in using that loan, we have estimated that they have saved $600,000 in that time. Now, the other thing that is very unique about this is it's a payroll deduction monthly. And every time there's a payroll deduction, positive credit is reported. So as a result, the employees are not only having a fair loan, they're building toward the opportunity to have an even better loan in your local community. In addition to Doñata County, Town of Burnaleo has also adopted this and they have had 13% of their employees in two months utilizing it. Our survey data suggests that at least 20% of public employees have used storefront lenders in the last year. So this is a huge opportunity for your employees. I, I think that you have information that your county manager and Commissioner O'Donnell have provided to you. And so at this point, I'll stand for questions.
Where's the money come from?
So the, the True Connect is actually a technology company and the financing behind it is at Sunrise Bank in Minneapolis. However, they, True Connect and Sunrise Bank have agreed to have local financial partners participate as well. They have just signed an agreement, for instance, with Guadalupe Credit Union. So Guadalupe Credit Union now is financing these loans as well and benefiting from the 24.9% interest rate.
And you're offering this to public entities or?
Public and private. There are over 1,500 public and private entities across the nation that are utilizing this. In, on the 15th of this month, Santa Fe Public Schools will, will use it. City of Albuquerque has adopted and are moving forward and County of Burnaleo is, I presented it in an information center, an information meeting and for them, and we expect that they will adopt this next week. I speak this Friday to Northern New Mexico Community College, Northern New Mexico College, and they expect to adopt as well.
And it's $3,000 maximum over one year?
That's correct.
It's amazing the numbers of people who take out such incredibly loan-shark loans. Who are some of the players in this storefront lending?
So I don't have the names at hand, but there are three bigs in, in the nation. Two of them are in Atlanta. But one of the things that's interesting also that you may not know is that there are lines of credit that are backing these, that are coming from some of our biggest banks in the nation. Wells Fargo and Citi are the biggest backers of this.
Of the storefront lending operations?
Right. Of the lines of credit that allow them to operate.
The lines of credit that financing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There you go.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, how would we proceed? Do we need a resolution or is it something we could just direct staff to set up with HR? What position?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, the sample resolution was provided in this quarter from the City of Albuquerque, so that's something we can look at. I wanted the presentation to come before the full board. I had the opportunity to meet in this quarter. To me, it's something like a great tool, an opportunity to provide employees with another option. We do probably have a lot more than we would expect of our employees taking out these loans or title loans. And to me, I agree with this quarter, it's an opportunity for us to give them a head start and save a lot of interest. Those loans definitely do create a ditch and it's hard for them to ever get out of that. So it's just another tool. It does seem like it's a very minimal impact to staff and administrative time. It basically works as a garnishment and we do another situation to their employees. So we probably will have a follow-up meeting with HR. It's a very rich opportunity to hear the presentation as well today and so we'll follow up with them and hopefully bring something back to you guys maybe in the 2019 meeting or in September.
It does have to be RFP though, to solve that in that resolution. So there has to be a RFP.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, it is unusual to use an RFP because there's no money exchanged. The county, the City of Albuquerque did that because apparently there was a court order for them to do all RFPs on all services that came about about two years ago. But it is, none of the other entities in New Mexico has done an RFP.
We can look into that further as well, Chairman. I think, I agree with this quarter, it's, we're not purchasing a service, we're just passing it through. Essentially, we're not going to be the ones responsible for the money or anything. We're just basically garnishing it if one of the employees chooses to apply for the loan. So we'll look into it and make sure that it doesn't need to be RFP.
So get all the information to Ms. Webber. She's at the, at the, this side.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the other thing that some of the entities that are operating in New Mexico now have found valuable is to talk to others in the state that have already adopted, to see the ease of adoption of this and also the, the high use and high morale that has come from employees when they do adopt. And I would suggest to you that with the Town of Burnaleo being able to do this and do it and set it up in a matter of two weeks, that it really is a simple process.
Also helps employees build their credit. Yes, that's another component that I would like to.
They also are eligible for six credit counseling sessions. And actually, now that Guadalupe is on board, they want to do those face-to-face with your employees.
That's hilarious.
Yes. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank this quarter from Albuquerque. And I know we have two or three of these loan sharks in the town of Towes. And I don't know if anybody saw a recent newspaper article of one of them, you know, they advertise all the time. If they had a disclaimer... If they had a disclaimer, military, that apparently they're not allowed to give loans to the military. Do you know anything about that military?
Yes, Commissioner. So, the Department of Defense actually passed a regulation that precludes the issuing of one of the storefront, any storefront loan over 36% to any active-duty military personnel. And they just amended that to include their families and retirees. However, if the storefronts can get around that by not asking that question, they do.
Mr. Chairman, is there a list, a published list of potential loan shark companies out there that is available?
Yes, there is, and I'd be glad to share that with you. And as I said, there are over 700 licenses in New Mexico. And actually, Commissioner O'Donnell, I think you have 13 in Taos.
Oh, no.
In Taos.
Whoa.
I will check that bit and see what the most recent data is. We expect that some of these folks are going to go out of business based on the work we did in the last legislative session, because there are new rules. And some of them would have to radically change their business model to comply with the new rules or go out of business.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you for your time.
Moving on, item seven is our consent agenda. These items and the consent agenda below have been reviewed through the purpose of voting on all items with one vote. Items listed are for the Commissioner's consideration and decision. I will read the consent agenda into the record. Item A, approval of purchase of two new command units for Cerro Fire and Amalia Fire. Item B is approval of contract TCC 2017-096, contract between Taos County and Silvus Deservation Construction Center Soul Fire Station. Item C is approval of contract TCC 2017-058, contract between Taos County and Summit Food Services LLC for meal and commissary services for the detention centers. Item D is approval of contract TCC 2017-099, contract between Taos County and GM Emulsion LLC for the Taos County Complex East and West parking lot improvements. Pleasure, the commission.
Mr. Chairman, just with regards to item D, if we could have a little explanation of that.
Okay, so, we'll pull item D, so the, I'm looking for a motion for items A, B, and C.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, motion and a second, no discussion can occur. Clerk Callroe.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackmore?
Yes.
Chairman, the vote.
Yes. Okay, yes, item in business. Required to be approval of required of contract TCC 2017-089, contract between Taos County and GM Emulsion LLC for Taos County Complex East and West Park and Lot.
Good morning, Chairman. Kind of a good morning, Commissioner. What to the county went to do is contract of GM Emulsions under a state price agreement. As you can see, the parking lot, both the east and west side has deteriorated, and there's a lot of cracks already in it. So, what we're going to do is hire GM Emulsions to crack seal it and then also chip seal, and there's another seal, a fog seal on it, and then we're also going to strike the parking lot.
If the wear and tear that's taken place in the parking lot, is that normal, or is it due to maybe work not being done properly?
We would consider it normal, wear and tear. There's some areas that are a little bit worse off than others, but overall, it seems like normal wear and tear. This pavement was laid six years ago, and it takes a beating also from the sun when the cars ride here as well.
Also, the, as far as the drake and joint intersection, that area, that isn't part of this?
No, that's a separate design by a bit of engineering that has not been bid out. It's shovel-ready is where we stand with that. And the commissioners, if you choose to move forward with that project.
I happen to be driving during one of the rainstorms that we had, and I can see where a lot of that moisture is just coming out and staying in that area.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Clerk, would you like to...
Thanks, Chairman. We should look into expanding that contract to some of the roads that we did six, seven years ago. You know, it's a very effective process to seal those seams now, you know? Because those roads, they just have the little surface seams after six, seven years that are going to get a whole lot worse, but that saving process is really useful in keeping up our investments.
It is on state contracts.
It's also on District 2 for...
I think District 4.
We're going to use GM Emulsion in District 2. We just weren't ready to come forward with the contract for this meeting. And then we're actually probably looking at two roads and the money that was available with District 2 to do the chip seal line and crack seal.
But there's a process where you can just get the cracks.
Right. You can just do that as well.
As well that crack.
Yeah. Every road that we've done in the past decade, we've just about getting to that place.
Yonoro.
Yeah. So, that'd be a good thing for the public works to plan out, map it out, see what the costs are. Maybe we could use some of our extra reserves for that.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and move that we approved item B.
Okay, and a motion, second. Item A is approved contract TCC 2017-099, contract between Taos County and GM Emulsion LLC for Taos County Complex East and West Park and Lot. Further discussion. Chairman, clerk call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackmore?
Yes.
Chairman Blackmore?
Yes. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Mr. Chairman, I move for a five-minute break.
All right. Second, and motion, second for five-minute break. Clerk Callroe.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackmore?
Yes.
Y'all.
Oh, that is... Twenty-five minutes. Can we... So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, clerk call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackmore?
Yes.
Chairman Blackmore?
Yes, thank you. Item A is department matters. The employee, item A is Employee Action Committee is requesting Friday, September 1st, 2017, to hold an Employee Appreciation Day at the North San Francisco Park from 10:00 to 5:00. That's the annual picnic and stuff. Alisa, thanks for being here this morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. The EAC Committee is trying to see if we can get your permission to hold it on Friday, September 1st, 10:00 to 5:00. We're going to have food, some games, the usual for trying to get the Dunkin' Booth again, or make one for ourselves. We are also, what we will have to ask, if the treasurer will probably have to close early to balance, and that's about the, or the assessors, we have to indicate early for their certain departments.
And does Renell have a packet that night?
Um, Renell has a packet, no.
No.
Other than this. The assessor's office needs to post his tax rate, and we just found out yesterday, so there might be a meeting, but Abel was going to let us know at a time which would be a small packet in place.
Okay, our regular meeting was moved to the 29th.
Yes.
There's no meeting on the fifth, so we can do that at 6% of whatever works with that.
Yeah, he thinks probably five business days instead of the weekend counting that he was going to let us know.
Mr. Chairman, we actually have requested, if it's possible, through the habit of the twenty, we'll just ask the W force to try to bridge your...
Yeah, he said that they give, that they have to wait till the state gives them to them, so he's not in control of that part, but he would let us know. And then that also, that following Monday is a holiday, so...
Right. I'd like to make a motion myself to approve that the Employee Action Committee, on their behalf, would allow our employees to have their employee appreciation day at the North San Francisco Park from 10:00 to 5:00. Second, that...
And also, could you please attend so we can get Dunkin'.
No. You're Albuquerque, that's it.
Oh, okay. I've been practicing.
Sheriff Overe, sir. You will be permanent fixture of the Dunkin' Booth. And real, I think, did you raise your hand?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Alisa, Scott Carlson has the Dunkin' Booth that Carnival of Life was using.
Yeah, yes, I'll make it ready on that.
His cell number?
Yes, I'll get that coming afterwards. In fact, I saw that apply, that's what I was going to do next.
770-7695 is his number to give the Dunkin' Booth.
Okay. I think they're going to try to make one too, so we can have one to use at different events, so we're going to credit you. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Clerk Callroe.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackmore?
Yes.
Chairman Blackmore?
Yes. Item nine is County Manager Report Matters. Item A is update to County Commission on various items affected. Mr. Board.
Chairman, Commissioners, in the back of your packet, we've attached a few different events, things that have come across my desk that I wanted to extend out to you. The first one is an invitation from Kit Carson, electric co-op, for gathering on Ways to Partner for our community. They're going to be holding a working lunch Friday, August 18th, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. With all of these, I would just ask that you coordinate with myself or Renell so that we can know how many Commissioners may be in attendance for quorum issues, stuff like that, so we'll be able to certainly send an email to myself and CC Renell will be able to coordinate that. The next invitation we got was from the New Mexico Department of Veterans Services. They have our second annual Veterans Transportation Summit, August 22nd, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in Albuquerque. And the address is on there, there's a phone number. Same thing, if you want to attend, let us know, we'll go and register for anyone that wants to attend. And then we've also attached to your packet the agenda for this week's legislative finance committee, a meeting up at Taos Key Valley. They kick off tomorrow morning, 8:30 a.m. This is always a very big LSC meeting. It's the first revenue projections that put off the budget here, so there'll be a lot of people from the state looking for their numbers. It's a huge, it's the kickoff really to the budget. So, last year, they met up in Red River, and then this year, Taos Key Valley, so we're lucky to get them for these big events. And if you hope want to attend in medicine as well, so you can make sure that you don't have quorum issues, and the whole agenda's on here.
I'm on the agenda for Thursday morning at 8:30, so if anybody else is going, I turn on the monitor and place.
Want to thank our staff yesterday for yesterday's dedication of the Veteran Cemetery. They did a really great job working together to prepare the site. Obviously, got to thank the veterans that have worked on this project forever and the previous commissions that backed the fall really. It was important for us to have this groundbreaking, and important for us, I think, to let the rest of the community know that the county's committed and that we still need their help as well. And it was a great turnout, I appreciate everyone's efforts, and I think it will get us, I heard right away afterwards, the lunch more offers and people wanting to provide their help, and we'll take their help, so it will get done. We will continue to work towards the complete project. Thank you, Ms. Commissioner O'Donnell, for the pictures. You can see the War Chief did a blessing. We were blessed to have a 100-year-old World War II veteran and one of the last surviving battalion death march veterans from Taos County who was there as well. Mr. Corlow had piece and good comments and introduced a lot of the veterans that were there. Congressman Gohan was there, Senator Cisneros, Representative Gonzalez were all there to show their support. And we had a beautiful morning, thank goodness it was done in the morning and not the afternoon as we saw the rain, that would have been a whole different event with the rains in that, but it turned out very well, so thank you all. One more thing, I had a visit from Mr. Steve Fulendorf, who's very involved with the Rotary Club, and he wanted me to pass an open invitation to any of the commissioners that would like to speak. They meet every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at the Patina Lodge, and if any of the commissioners ever want to speak, you have an open invitation. You could coordinate that through me or directly through Mr. Fulendorf. But they're also looking for somebody that may want to be a judge for their chili challenge golf tournament that they have September 16th. So, if any of the commissioners want to volunteer to be a judge for the chili challenge, let me know, and we can coordinate that with them as well, so...
Yeah, we're playing for camp, but she did it last year, she's a junior.
I have to check, I have to get back to you, check my account.
Okay, great, but yeah, let me know, and we'll get you up there to test the chili. Hopefully, it's not too hot.
Make part to the...
And as Alisa mentioned, we may have to have a special meeting depending on the assessor's schedule to certify the tax rates. It's a statutory requirement, so if we've already pushed back to September, or moved forward to September 5th meeting, so we'll try and coordinate that later in the week after the holiday, if we have to do that. And at this time, my staff, any questions for the commission?
Are either of you present at me going to Red River last year? Are you going Thursday morning?
Yes, I do.
Are you staying the rest of the day?
I would probably stay through midday. I think there's some interesting stuff on the agenda Wednesday, if I stay through most of the day Wednesday, and then Thursday morning, I think we'll get into what they have to say. I want to hear about the TID as well, and how that's going.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to put out a calendar, commission calendar? I've not been yet anymore, so I'm not sure if you're doing that or not.
Yes, we'll continue to do that, and you'll start to see the kind of, these kinds of things down there as well, as I presented to you. But yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I haven't checked it out, but after the meeting today, we've got another update coming.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Mr. Manager, when do you anticipate a resolution relating to the TID for administrative fees?
That's something that we will be working with Randy Arribo, we have started work with him when he was with us last year, and he had gotten a little ways in, and then he didn't have enough money in his contract, and we ran out of that, so we're going to pick that back up. His experience from Bernalillo County is, makes it pretty fluid, I think, for him to do that. So, yeah, that's been a major request of our treasury as well, to get that done and be able to start collecting those fees.
I was surprised that the treasurer each month has to individually input the 600 TID properties in the ski valley and do a calculation, and that's, that's a lot of work.
Yes, it is, it's a lot of work. It's also a lot of work for our assessor's office to bring up their, as often as they have had to. So, yes, administrative fees is an important thing to pursue. We also hopefully can bank some of that money and maybe use it for upgraded software at some point to make the work a lot easier for the treasurer's office. A lot of it could be done if it was automated, but we don't have that ability within Triatic at this time. That may be an option, that they could build something to help them, and we're looking into that.
Mr. Chairman, that says on the old courthouse and South Level's core doors.
Um, I don't have an update right now on the historic courthouse. You know, we're still working on finalizing the architectural design, so I'll get you an update next meeting for sure.
And what will those become, more of an architectural design?
I hope you do an update at the next meeting, I don't have an answer at this time. And those core doors, Ren, do you have an update on those core doors?
I went through there yesterday when we left the Veteran Cemetery, and there was nothing.
Yeah, they put some more material down, I think they did kind of blade where they had lowered the mat holes, so it's a little bit more drivable at this time, but we still are waiting for asphalt. And so, that does have a deadline, I believe at the end of August, so they do need to get in.
I thought they were going to be paying this week.
Yeah, so we'll follow up with that and get you an update. I'll send out an email update.
As I heard, the payment was scheduled to start yesterday, that's why we went down there after. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I, the high road to Taos tour is September 16th and 17th, so I'm going to decline to be a chili judge, so if there's any other commissioners that would like...
I guess that will make sense. For Anna, would you look to the... Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Sheriff Overe?
Shoot me any information, if I'm available, I'll do.
All right. Share it with all of our technicians.
What's happening then?
It sounds painful.
Mr. Patton paid it in last year, if I remember. Okay, thank you, thank you. Item 10 is Commissioners Report Matters, um, new business to consider a future Commission meeting, and I already told this report on the appointment to the Strong Heart and the alternate.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to see the renaming of the county roads, even can very well the fees to the Veterans Cemetery, um, at some point in the agenda, I know our former attorney was going to put it on the agenda.
Let's, uh.
I actually have nothing for that. Commissioner, I do believe that Miss Baker, who's sending an email to Chairman and Mr. Blackenham, indicating that presentation would be necessary, that Mr. Coroner has the process, so they, the four agents have shot him to reform.
So if you could bring that process. Do you want to talk Veterans Highway, Veterans Lane, Veterans?
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, um, maybe we ought to have a contest, maybe we ought to have, um, the public.
It has to be better for the day.
Something to relate to a Veterans Center.
It's a great petition. Commissioner's announcements.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see that resolution on the, um, loan program. And also, um, I understand from Mr. Figueroa, he set up the Art and Artifacts Committee this Thursday at 1:30. I'd like to just get that back on the agenda to make sure we have, um, I think the committee's short a couple of people, so we could maybe at the next meeting get some members to appoint, and if you would consider, um, allowing me to serve on that committee, so that would be on the, the next agenda.
Okay, Arts and Artifact Appointment, and each of us, I believe, has a full key to that? That's correct, okay. I had a suggestion, we left the previous one, but I'm changing my.
Okay. But, Mr. Chairman, there is, he's set a meeting up, uh, for this Thursday at 1:30, and you are still, uh, still the, uh.
I'm most likely to be coming back from the Ski Valley, so go ahead and go with my.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner's announcements, I just wanted to say I did a 10 on behalf of Commissioner O'Donnell and myself, the MAC Board of Referees meeting down at Uppcroft, that's a long drive, and, um, and briefings from Justice, I thought it was Chief Justice standing with me, he's now Justice Analyst, and, uh, Senator, Senator Iger Soto was there to go to link them, the meetings out, and, uh, we talked about the priorities that would be, uh, we rated the five priorities that were set at the meeting here in Taos, we voted on the five in order, and we made all five equal importance. So as soon as I get some stuff in, I'll just share that with the manager to send back to the, uh, the Commission.
What was the discussions? Mr. Chairman, on our conference.
Yeah, and everybody just loved everything about it, our event really got a lot of praise. The next night was okay with the accommodations, it'd really be nice if we went back to the Convention Center here, but whatever happened, happened, but again, the comment about hotels was just embarrassing.
Okay, so I, I just sent that email to the manager, and I'm hoping that he can forward it to our mayor, so he can utilize his argument for what he wants to do. It is embarrassing to see that, you know, when, when people visiting Taos, staying in our hotels, hotels, where they have to run over to Walmart or wherever they go to get their own cleaning supplies, I think they're giving, um, the fact that is embarrassing.
So. And then they kicked some of the staff out accidentally, and then rebooked the rooms to people, so staff would scramble and try to find bed and breakfast and stuff, it was just embarrassing. All right. Item C is a report on the inspection of the bridge, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, last week, August 7th through the 11th, there was a hundred percent bridge inspection, uh, there was one lane traffic, let's see if you can get it to do via PowerPoint, uh, people working on one side. This was done by HDR, who got the contract from NM DOT, there were a total of sixteen crew members. And what you see here are Society of Professional Rope Access Technicians, now the SPRAT, HDR had four that are certified as SPRAT, and, um, there were a total of six from HDR, um, all were civil structural engineers, um.
What a fun job.
So, this particular shot is the snooker truck, um, which is different than the SPRAT, but hopefully we can go back, can you play that video that we had?
Which video?
Five, MLB, below. Um, now you're, you need to go down to the, yeah, right there, five, this bottom one here. Down. So these, this is the SPRAT crew, they rappelled down into the gorge, and this is, um, one of the members coming up after going down to the piers and inspecting, uh, the piers, so it, it is a fun job, and they're all civil engineers. They did look for quantifying deterioration of all components of the bridge, steel and concrete, you can go ahead and play the rest of the photos. They did check for a sinkhole on the west side.
Did they find it?
And, uh, there was no evidence of a sinkhole, uh, there was a shot earlier on where they did see erosion, this is the shot where they did notice there was a drainage, um, they did say if they, it was warranted for further studies, they could send a geologist out. In addition, NM DOT has their snooker truck, uh, that was out there, and, um, this is called an underbridge inspection unit, it's the high-tech, uh, snooker that DOT has, uh, has a counterweight of 17,000 pounds, um, it can withstand high winds. I'm wondering why you can't get a PowerPoint presentation going here.
Can you turn the audio up?
You can just, if there's a way you can just get these twelve to play continuously, that would be wonderful.
I'll just finish your presentation if you turn the volume down.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Anissa, could you at least maybe start with shot number seven? Just pass forward to. Are you able to advance that? Just advance them, that would be great. So, um, HDR did the inspection, and they will use it to create a model, a superstructure, they're going to be, um, looking at the truss to see if it can hold higher limits, um, they should have a model ready, uh, in October that will give a load rating to see if it can withstand any extra weight. There is a recommendation paint that will be let out separately by NM DOT, um, and basically that's my report, I don't know why the slideshow didn't work, but, uh, this is the snooker truck. Okay, thank you. Trying.
But they're done.
Even more focused here.
Did you take?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, one thing that was failed to be mentioned in item nine was the auditors, we had the audit entrance this morning, early morning, um, met with them, they gave us their plan, and scheduled the audit exit as well.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, I will send out an email with the contact information of the manager on the, on the job, so that if any of you have anything specific that you want to share with them, you'll have this contact information. Uh, we have the entrance on this this morning, we anticipate the exit to be November 14th, they are on site right now, they'll be back in September for a few days, and then they'll do the majority of the test for October, um, 13th or so, middle of October, so I'll send all that scheduled out and email to you, um, with their contact information.
Commissioner O'Donnell, I've told you in the past that what the pictures of the bridge do regarding long-term issues that I have, I would appreciate you letting me know about that. Thank you. Item 10 is Executive Session for the Taos County Board of Commissioners convening closed session, um, this is for the purpose of discussion regarding contract appointment of veteran county attorney, this matter may be discussed in closed session under Open Meetings Act exemption 10151H2, which allows for discussion of other snow matter. Is it a pleasure of the Commission, you want to executive session at this time?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion? Okay. And a second, clear color.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes, Commissioner Blackenham.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Thank you. I don't anticipate this being very long, Francis, maybe Anna. Motion to come back into regular session, just so.
Second.
Motion is second for color.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Turn it back.
Yes. I will give a report, and I would like, after I've had to see it here most of the time as our attorney right now, we, uh, discussed things having to do with a proposed personnel item, and we were able to do that under Open Meetings Act exemption 10151H2, we stayed on topic, and, um, notices were made during our executive session, do you, in your time with us, do you agree to that?
I can hear.
Do they have a motion for this?
So, Chairman.
Second.
Motion second, clear color.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes. Item 11 allows the Taos County Board of Commissioners to convene an open session to possible consideration and decision regarding contract appointment of veteran county attorney. Commissioner O'Donnell, do you have, would you like to make a motion, or would you like to?
I'd like for you to.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we accept the contract that was presented to us with the following changes. Under item, section three, B, you would strike everything after the 24 in parentheses, to the end of that period. Limiting the, to 24 hours at $100 per hour. Per week, per week. Then, the next item of clarification, that severance would only be granted if Taos County Board of Commissioners would choose to terminate the contract. The rest of the contract is accepted.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
We need a second before we discuss.
I'll go in a second.
A motion and a second.
With the inclusion to make that amendment, but if you get on the 18th.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll vote on the amendment first, since we have a motion at second, that the, uh, new contract, if we choose to adopt later in this proceedings, would be in effect August 18th, 2017. Wait a second.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Clear color.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes. So the motion of the contract to go in place with the changes I suggested in my motion was seconded, going effect because of the amendment on the 18th. Clear color.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is, um, item 12 is adjourned.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is second, I'll pay to say aye.
Aye.